I would like to call to order the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen's regular meeting for August 21st, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have performed the Bledge Allegiance additions and changes to the agenda. I am good as well. Alright, that brings us to item four, public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a Board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's office or the Board Chair. Persons online wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized. Is there any public comment for the regular meeting at this time? Please.
My name is Kevin Toomery, 110 Kenny Road. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for being here, Town Manager, all your hard work. I'd also like to, in particular, thanks to the Department of Public Works Action Committee and all their efforts. Grateful for that leadership that Peter Casper provided in the past, now Mal Leifner. And it's good to have Keith Pettit as a member of that committee that has witnessed the diligent efforts of the committee now going on for quite some time. All the committee members, including Todd, Wayne, David, and Joey, Jody are just as important, as well as the input of the DPW Director Paul Forrest. So I'd like to recognize all those people and their efforts. The Department of Public Works issue was noted as early as 2004 in the Plan of Conservation and Development. As an important issue that needs to be addressed. In 2014, the Plan of Conservation and Development noted on page 178, "The Public Works facilities are clearly the town facilities most in need of replacement and repair." So it's been an important issue for a long time. The Department of Public Works Action Committee survey was formed and a survey was taken that reported 69% of all respondents that keep Public Works at Old Colchester Road. That was 874 respondents, 96.45% were Hebron resident taxpayers. I'll just give a short kind of brief history of what's going on, I'm sure you all know. But it's an important topic and important to keep in mind and keep this focus on Old Colchester Road. On August 18th, just a couple of days ago, the DPW Action Committee Member Richard Steiner, as well respected for his efforts in building major building projects in Hebron, stated that the committee is, quote, "Laser-focused on 550 Old Colchester Road. There will be bumps in the road, but the work of the design team shows it is doable," end quote. And that is a really important statement by Mr. Steiner, who is, again, a well-respected member and has done a lot for the building and construction in Hebron. So I just want to express that to the Board of Selectmen and to the public, to people that are listening, to please support the plans for the Department of Public Works at Old Colchester Road as it is presented and as it will move forward on this, in this direction. Important for the town representatives, but also the public to really get on board with this plan. So thank you much.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Any comment online?
I don't see you online yet.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll proceed to item number five. Good to know?
Well, I don't, I just haven't got a mention on it. I don't have a good to know, but we have a new resident trooper that's filling in while our other resident trooper got deployed. And she just started, so she couldn't be here tonight. And then she's going to be busy with the fair, but I'm hoping to have her at the next meeting for good to know. But her name is Kristen Coit, C-O-I-T, and she's bed number 694. I hit the ground running. She's already been to two safety meetings for the fair, and she's been in my office dealing with some situations as well. So we found her. Welcome and experienced, and I think we're gonna be served good by her. I'll just hear.
Okay. That brings us to item number six, appointments and resignations. The resignation for Water Pollution Control Authority. Do you want to take care of that motion?
Todd moves at the Hebron Board of Selectmen, accept the resignation of Kevin Grady from the Water Pollution Control Authority, but regret and thanks for his years of service.
Alright, any comment? Okay. I'm sorry to see someone go from WPCA, but you know, it's sad anytime you lose that experience on a board, and it's tough to get volunteers, but hopefully we'll be able to replace that quickly. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay, or abstentions. Dan Larson?
Dan Larson, aye.
John Fitzgerald, if it's your life. Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye. Motion passes. The next appointment and resignation will be Administrative Secretary for the Town Manager's Office. Do you want to tackle that one, Sean? There we go. Move that. In accordance with Town Charter Section 803, the Hebron Board of Selectmen confirms the Town Manager's appointment of Mallory Strigl. The Strigl?
Strigl.
Strigl, sorry, I apologize. Strigl. I hate to mispronounce. And then I'll follow up on that. As Administrative Secretary for the Town Manager's Office, effective August 25th, 2025. If you would like to make a public comment, please feel free at this time, or if not, okay. Any comment from any of the Board members?
I think the only thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, and I really feel compelled to put this on the record, is that I think she's wonderfully qualified and we're delighted to welcome her. But this was, again, another job description I would have liked to see before posting, and I know that we're going to discuss that at a later date, but I want to put that on the record. Happy to support you tonight. Thank you so much.
Alright. If there's no further comment, all those oh, go ahead, Dan.
I would just like to say we had some incredibly wonderful candidates, and we were very, very fortunate. I think she'll be a perfect fit, and I have nothing but pride and happiness that she's being offered the position.
Awesome. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, nay, or abstentions. Dan Larson?
Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye. Motion passes. Welcome. That brings us to item number seven, Town Manager's report.
So, been a while since we met. After the last meeting, we attended the FOI hearing in Hartford with the complaint from the Friends of the Fugus Library, so hopefully that would be the last court hearing, and they'll be rendering a decision hopefully in the middle of September when we're back, what they think that went.
Are they close to hitting the time when they're going to run out, when the complaint is going to run out, they're going to run out of time, right, before they have to issue?
Yes, they were very good question. They're very cognizant of that, and she brought that, the hearing officer brought that up at the last hearing, and we got final arguments have been submitted, and they're going to make the ruling prior to that date, so they should be able to fit it within the timeframe a lot of that.
Okay.
Okay. And you're really working with the new trooper, and we're getting ready for back to school, so we're putting some schedules together, some police coverage for elementary schools, because their old schools are busy in the morning, at least for the startup of school, and also some actual patrols for the library for the first week or two after school to make sure that everybody behaves. So we're setting that up with her. She's been good. Working with the Lions Club, of course, getting ready for the fair. That's a big thing that's going to dominate our town for four days, and we're putting all the all the emergency plans together. We got the DOT permit with the pattern of the change of the traffic approved, so we're in good shape there. So hopefully we just, you know, shoot for good weather. As you know, we're working with the auditors. They were in this week. We're trying to get that. They're doing more testing, so they've been in all week with Lori and herself, and the new temp has started in the finance, just temporarily. So he seems to be like a pretty intelligent person. He hit the ground running as well, so we'll get caught up in that area. We're getting ready to send out the CIP request, believe it or not. It's that time of the year, that's Capital Improvement Plan, to the department heads, and they get about a little bit more than a month to submit their requests with all the information, which is quite detailed, and we got some new people, so we're going to have to do some training on that, but we're up for that task, but we're going to send that out after the staff meeting Monday. Good news. I always like to throw good news, and we got a, it'll get it in trouble. We got, it's in accordance with the next agenda?
Yeah, I put it on the next agenda.
So what I'm talking about is currently we have a distribution check for its members of $27,850. That's a good size check we got back for being a member of Karma. Five or more million distribution within the towns that belong to them. So that's always good news.
And what is that money used for when we get that back?
Well, that goes back to the general fund. It does not actually earmark for anything, but and then we're still busy, very busy with the union negotiations, and then we have the bid opening tomorrow for the Ram Generator. We've been working with the Building Committee on that. We worked on the town personnel policy. That was quite a bit of back and forth between our office and the Labor Attorney. That's now a red line form, and we sent that out to you guys, so you won't, let's not look for you guys to make any decisions on that.
Yeah, no, and it's actually, it's, you know, a lot to cover, and so obviously, we're not ready for anything yet, but just make sure that you're working your way through it, and if you have any questions, you know, please email them to Andy and me, and that way we kind of have an idea of what we need to cover, if anybody needs to come in and talk about any subjects or anything like that.
Good. Perfect. Thank you. And I'm not going to do it under ARPA because it's asterisk, but we're going to put the fence up, I believe, next week for the Dog Pound Park. They're going to, they're going to install the hand pump well at the Dog Park, and we worked a sidewalk at the Horton today. It was another ARPA project. So we're really starting to zero in on the last things on that list. So we'll have a full report, and then we'll give you an auditing of that, isn't where we stand with all that, when that's done. We're diligently trying to knock it out. That's it.
Awesome.
That's awesome.
Yes, I'm on.
That brings us to item eight, old business. We kind of went over the last few things for the ARPA, and that brings us to the Department of Public Works Action Committee update, and I believe they have a presentation.
We do, and now like dirt 62 Wellswood Road, and here tonight to say thank you to Board of Selectmen, thank you to the public for allowing us to do this. This will be the first of multiple presentations, and they'll kind of be governed by the speed of development, and based on the speed of development with our design professionals, I think we're going to be here almost every meeting to give you more information. So with no further ado, like Todd is going to take care of the presentation, and please interrupt at any time and ask questions. We want this to be a back and forth discussion, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Todd Hobbick, 98 E Street, Department of Public Works Action Committee, Vice Chair. Mal has put together a series of slides. You have those available to you. And please, as we go through this, first thing I want to say before Dory changes any slides, everything here is a draft. There is nothing cast in stone here. I'll take these pictures, publish them on Facebook, and say, I don't like it. We're not there yet. A lot of, a lot of time and effort and thought has gone into these, this project here. This is the picture of the existing site. If anyone has ever been there, pretty much know where the landfill was, where the garage is, where all the existing structures are.
It's a delay.
It's a touch of
Oh, I'm sorry. That is, yeah, that is the existing facility. Just the wrong distance for me. Yeah, that's the current site. You mind?
Please.
Obviously, the existing salt shed, salt storage, there's a line of plows back here that go on in the winter. Existing dog kennel is part of the old cold storage. All of these structures have to go in order to build something new. But we have to completely vacate that site. Please. So, pretty similar to where the public area is now, is where the public will come in and utilize the transfer station and all the bulky waste, and all those is what the thought is currently. But it may shift based on environmental impact studies of the ground, and they haven't completed that yet. We won't know where anything goes for sure. So just speculation, just to show that it all will fit. Please. They've got a couple of different traffic patterns set up with just public access, trying to isolate Public Works from transfer station. Please. Did it change? I missed it.
It's just, it did change. It's just the text on there describing.
So overhead covered protection was discussed to keep the cardboard from getting wet, for instance. We're not sure exactly how it's going to be accomplished, if it's individual for each container, or if it's a covered area that the containers go on, or still in process. Your draft, please. I won't be able to say that enough. So, this is an indication of pretty much sort of to scale size of the building that's needed for the garage now to facilitate the existing vehicles that we do currently own. Where that goes, shift up, down, over, not sure. So they've done the calculations based on Paul Forrest really is looking for a pass-through garage situation, which makes it easier to get the trucks in and out. They don't have to back out. You got a plow on the front in the wintertime. You're trying to swing a plow on a truck, and so if it just pulls right out, it'll be easier. So these are the different bays and the different sizes who accommodate this building, which shows here, and these are pretty accurate as far as what they're going to need or what they're looking to use. So we have 12 600-square-foot bays, really back-to-back 600-foot bays that they could drive through, so on. Mechanics area, two mechanic areas, two lifts. The current doors now are 12 by 12. The new doors, we discussed, 14 by 14, a little easier to get in and out with a truck or a plow, et cetera. Please. Please stop at any time, ask questions. Office Administration Building. We found out at the last meeting that anytime you have a separate building, and I don't remember the exact department that mandates this, you need separate septic, public help. You need separate septic system. So if we have a garage and an administration building, needs its own septic system, needs its own septic system. Don't have a lot of room for multiple septic systems, so the talk is to maybe combine the two buildings. Not, not space, I mean, just so they're together so that they use one septic system. How that's going to look, how it's going to be, floor height, ceiling height, no way to know yet. We don't know the existing elevation, where it's going to be. This is really, really preliminary. Please. So the square footage for all the different areas in this administration office space is laid out in your packet there, but it's toilets and file cabinets and conference room and break room, training room. All that is to come up with the square footage for the buildings that are shown here. Again, slide them around on the board. We're ready to go.
I'll just set her up. There's a minimum of sliding, because you have to share, you have to share probably contiguous wall at the very least.
I'm sorry.
For to keep, because the office, you're sent to the office, and the garage need to at least share a contiguous wall, right?
This is, I'm not 100%, no, no, I'm not 100% sure of how they're going to do that, as far as what the code requires. A little too early to speculate, really is, but that was just something that was like a, oh, you know, an aha moment. Oh, no, we can't have four septic systems, right? No room for it. All the square footages, please. Again, that's pretty, pretty similar to the last slide, Office Administration, just a little more open rooms, male and female bathrooms, locker rooms and stuff. It's just laying out the square footages, so we know how big this building needs to be.
Yeah, that was, oh.
Sorry.
Something that we learned is total square footage, 5460. If you add up all these, they don't quite meet this, because you have hallways, you have wall thicknesses, you have so all that adds up into the total exterior square footage, so it's a little bit, the numbers don't, if you add them all up and go, wait a minute, this doesn't match. So that's all part of the, and different buildings have different average 10 to 25% space. Hallways in schools are wider, for instance, though. Please. The animal kennel, this is everything that's required in the animal kennel. Sliding it around, we're still not sure if this is going to need its own septic system and where it's going to go. But again, it, this is everything that was talked about with the animal control officer that is needed for the kennel.
Todd, is the animal control officer comfortable with how close it is to the road? I mean, I know they're enclosed, but I'm not sure if the noise?
There's been a lot of discussion on where it's going to go.
Okay.
This was one of the preliminary ideas, and we had a lot of discussion about, you know, the neighbor across the street's going to have dogs. They do have dogs, and this will get them fired up, maybe. So where should it really go?
Okay.
You know, who's going to be manning it? Are they going to? Yes.
Thank you.
This, this site is, as you know, limited in space.
I know.
Oh, they do have their work cut out for them with where to shuffle the pieces to fit. Please. Oh, that's, again, square footage isn't square footage. It's just a representation. The optimal layouts have been discussed. Maybe two-story, maybe one-story, maybe partial two-story, one-story for storage in the building, and the garage kennel will be located to the rear, we're thinking, based on all the discussion we had. They did find some asbestos and PCBs in the existing building, which has already been discussed as far as how to what's the right word I'm looking for now? Abate, abate, abate the PCBs. We're not sure exactly where they found everything until the report is finished at the end of the month, but they did get back to us and tell us, yes. This is assumed based on the construction of the older building, and it's already been discussed about abating, abating the PCBs in the older structure, and already assuming it's there and paying to dispose it, without getting into a debate over what's there and how much and where and everything else. That opens up all kinds of problems, so just let's say it's there, let's get rid of it, handle it properly. Should be completed, the environmental study, Phase 1 should be done, they said by the end of August. Hopefully it's true. We'll see. Please. So there's other structures on the site, old storage building. Currently, the cold storage building was up here, it houses like the prep for tree work, some of the other smaller equipment, I'm guessing curb machines and paving machines and things that they don't need every day, but they store them out of the weather. That's how you maintain your equipment better, I mean. The sizes are listed with the same thing, 14-foot by 14-foot doors. Sign shop, that's really for storing all the signage that we utilize in the town, different places. We don't build them, we don't make them, but we do store. I do, too. I think this, this isn't quite this, but, oh, please. So, go ahead. This is where you can see that the drawings aren't indicative of the actual shapes, because you see that the cold storage, the sign shop in the drawing shows some, like, one side the other, but the total, the square footages are outside each other, and so that's, it's not, the drawing is not indicative of anything other than a placeholder. So, thank you, Todd. I'm sorry. No. So, storage loading area. I asked Paul, he said he wants to store 1,200 tons of treated salt, which is an annual consumption amount. We're not looking to stockpile multiple years. We're just looking to get us through a winter. Sometimes it works, sometimes you run out, sometimes you have a little leftover. It's a, it's really a shot in the dark. They have different areas that they're, this is not, again, a true representation, because they have mixed, different mix ratios with different materials that they use for different application. So this whole area, they have to load it inside, keep it out of the rain, so on. So that's just thought storage, and this, all I know, we don't know. Please. I hate, I hate pictures, because people take it to the bank and believe it's so. So, none of this is so. Fueling station, we currently have a fueling station on site now. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to reuse it, get it recertified, move it to the proper location. It's a big cement box with fuel, gas, and diesel inside the big cement box, and it can be moved. Where they're, where they're going to end up with it, and whether it's a new one or reuse this one, we're not sure yet. And it's being studied. It's being, seeing if we can reuse it. Emergency generator. Got to have that on the operation and off, seize off weather. Excuse me. Please. So currently, dripping for soil materials, stockpile. So they might have sand, stone, or mixing concrete. They might have construction materials for road work, pipe work, and things like that. They have to separate them. They're not all commingled, so they have bins, just like you go to Paul and Sandy's and get different mulches, same thing with the different materials that they use on site. Where this will go, they're not sure. It's been over here, it's been back here, if the kennel goes here, so it'll all fit, just where? Please. Uh, please. Yes, there's the. Bins from material, shows the kennel, sign shop, just another. Ideas to how things can or maybe work or maybe not. So there's, Silver Petrocelli has put together this schedule, which you all should have in your packet. And we're in here right now. And. They're showing us, uh, this is part of what we're looking to you at, but the different phases of environmental work. It's hard to read the different lines, I expect to read them on the paper, but, um. Red is the referendum, speculated referendum area, and then this is construction. Any questions on any of that schedule or anything? Um, they did find with surface penetrating radar, couple of different tanks. Or they don't even know what they are. But they found things. Could be a tank, could be, could be a. Old film name with rotten logs, I guess, that all, I don't know, it's just not dense. Is what I would have to say, so there's several areas of concern. Which will be identified in greater depth as they do some excavation of the site. So we've talked about different groups to help educate the public in general, uh, the DFW, Board of Ed, RAM. Both, uh. Republican Democratic Town Committees, Library, PTA, just, just to spread the word, because this. Project has been maybe lingering for. Fifteen years and, and something needs, we need to make this something for wish. So these are just some, some ideas that we talked about. Uh, one of the things we talked about was going to these places and talking to them. With a Board of Selectmen member.
Thank you.
And a committee member, uh, for technical backup, because it's both a. Political issue and a technical issue that might happen, so if you be partner. A Board of Selectmen and a committee member and talk to these people, we can either. Hopefully we can answer their questions or bring them back to get answers for them. Thank you. Um, something, these are some items that are gonna come up. That are gonna be front center for the Board of Selectmen, how the, uh. Trash, recyclables, faulty waste is gonna be handled during the downtime of this project. For year and a half, two years, the monies it costs. It's gonna have to be improved, voted on, I'm sure. I'm curious about that myself. How will oil and antifreeze be disposed of? Currently, there's spot at the site now. Where will the administrative offices be located, this has been put out there that. Company two firehouse. Or administrative office. Maintenance, Lions has graciously said, okay, this is what I understand. To park trucks and, and equipment at the fairgrounds, not during the fair. So that would also involve some logistics for Paul. During the fair and move everything out, move everything back, just like the school buses, I would imagine, if they are there, so. How long will we not have the recycling and transfer station available to the public? So that's gonna be based on what we find, how bad or good or whatever it is when it's all finalized. And then. How long the actual construction takes, if there's any. Speed bumps along the road during construction, which sometimes there can be, so that's gonna affect. The top line too. Those are all lost considerations to be thought about for this project. We have beat the ever-source land. Pretty hard discussing it. The group, the Action Committee believes that we should move forward to purchase that land. We all believe that it is nowhere near, would it be available in time for this project? But based on. Future considerations, Richard mentioned a few about transfer station use and. Different ways that maybe in the future, we may need more space for that transfer station in the future. And the town needs any other equipment, we may need a little more space for that. There are other things involved with that land, currently we're using the. Oddfellows property on the northern part of that property. For some of our parking, that is their access to their property behind us, that is their legal access. They currently use. A non-legal right-of-way at the far end of the other property, almost Colchester, to access their property. There is some. There is some land in the very back that follows the Jeremy River. That would connect some open space, so the consideration could be some open space, some. EPW, some. Different use of funds, purchase that property, we believe that we should still move forward to look at purchasing that property. Uh, you never get a chance to buy the neighbors, the lot next door to you. So, yeah, if you lose the chance, you lose it, it's gone. The working property continues to be a distraction for the public. It's kind of been sitting there since we bought it nine years ago and. People keep poking the, poking the bear, I don't know what we're doing with it, and, uh. Needs to be considered as part of your discussion. This is the, what Wayne was talking about, develop a public education plan with us, with you, with different groups. To get people on board, spend the money to update our facilities. Uh, when will the referendum be held and the date were. Scheduled is a rough idea, but. It's up to you folks and how that aligns with what the town is doing and what the budgets are doing and. You'll figure out the best way to present that, I'm sure, but it's, uh, it's gonna be an interesting, uh. Interesting vote, I'm sure, please. That's it, so that's the old side of the group, that's it, any questions about it?
Thank you very much for your presentation, um, you know, I, I, I agree. Was that Dan?
I, well, I, uh, I have a number of questions and comments. Um, and understanding that it's still very early in the process. Uh, I'm concerned first off about how far out the buildings are gonna go towards the steep drop-off. Uh, it appears as if there is a massive amount of, uh, fill. Needed also that the, how stable is the soils in and around that area? Uh, if you look at them, they look to be a primarily sand-based type of, of, uh. Ground in that area, which is in many instances, very tough to, to compact. Uh, as sand doesn't like to, to compact well. Um, I'm also curious, and it doesn't show what the turning radiuses of the bays are. And I, and I really am concerned that as trucks have gotten larger due to bridge laws. Uh, these are federal laws, uh, you know, established by DOT. Uh, I don't wanna make sure, I wanna make sure, is that a way to put it? That the turn areas are adequate for these trucks, especially with a. Snowplow on them, to be able to, to safely turn into the bays. And then at the other end, to be able to again, exit the bays and to get out and to do their runs. Uh, also, I'm wondering if anybody has talked with the power company, has there been any, uh. Design criteria which states just what this facility is going to be needing for power. Uh, it is a single-phase service there now. Uh, there is no three-phase available until you get out to Route eighty-five. The lines coming down Old Colchester Road, uh, are, I would assume. Nowhere is near adequate to carry the amount of current that this facility is going to need. Especially if it is incorporated to, uh, plan for the future with electric vehicle charging stations. So those are just a few of my questions, or I guess at this point, really concerns, so I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Let me address those, uh, if I, if I skip one or forget one, Danny, please get back to me. The, uh, the location of the facilities. Has really not been determined, I mean, we can't say enough that this is draft, draft, draft. We don't know what is gonna be done in terms of cuts and fills. Uh, we do know that there still to come are test borings to determine. Where facilities can be, can go, as Todd mentioned, the, uh, office and garage making be combined. Uh, Paul's, Paul Horace, uh. Desire is that it be a multi-story building to address. Part of the issue that you're talking about in terms of turning radius, if we don't take up a footprint with the administrative. Wing and put it on a, say, a second floor, uh, that gives us more space to, to work with. Uh, we did already ask about turning radiuses. That they currently have laid out. Is adequate. Um, now, does that mean that it will be adequate in the future? That's part of why the committee believes we ought to. At least move forward with the ever-source, now, we're not necessarily, just to clarify that a little bit. As Todd said, no way it's gonna be ready, because even if we can come to agreement with ever-source. Even if we can get the survey done. It then goes to Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, PURA, PURA in the state, and they have to okay it. Uh, for you folks that, uh. Know anything that has to go through a state agency, takes some time. You know, and that's not a, that's not a criticism, but they need to look at everything. I'm sorry?
Then we gotta vote on buying.
And then you gotta vote on buying it, if we should get to a point. Where it just doesn't look like, or it gets voted by the, uh, public. That they're not gonna approve that project on that site. Then we either have to buy it and redesign, or move to another site, I have no idea where. And at that point, don't buy it, yes, we've invested money in, uh, survey. We've invested time and probably some legal dollars in, in getting to the point where we can buy it. But. We, we've got to cut the cord if we can't build it, and that will give us time to do that, it's kind of good news, bad news. Um, what did I leave out, Danny?
Uh, I'm just concerned, I, I, again, if they've designed or at least. Figured out what their load breakdown is gonna be for that, that type of facility. Um, as that is, right now, it's only single-phase going down Old Colchester Road. Uh, our trash compactors are there as they are now, because of the horsepower ratings of those mo- motors. Are using phase converters to give you a, what they call false three-phase. Um. They draw a lot of power and, uh, this whole facility, especially if you incorporate. Uh, electric vehicle charging, uh, if, if that's the way that the world ends up going. And the state's obviously pushing for that, um, I'm just concerned what's gonna need to be done. Uh, on the power company's side of this to get adequate power down to that site.
And, uh, and yes, that is being considered, and that will be part of their. What they disclose when they get to the point where they've got at least the siding of, of everything done. You bring up an excellent point with the compactors, because right now I think we have two compactors. If you look at the detail in that presentation, they're talking about four compactors. Um, the other thing that, the, the electric, the electrician, the, uh, design professionals were given. Uh, to do was we've got that huge space out in the back. And we put solar on there, with single-phase, it's very inefficient. Um, and also can. The power company come up Route eighty-five from Colchester, because the supply on that end is. Better than the, the supply coming from Route eighty-five down, down from, uh. Yeah.
Well, you have Nile, Vandoor, you have, yeah.
In, are being considered, we will have some answers on that, and by the way. Um, as, as Todd mentioned, a lot of these studies are gonna be done in the next couple of weeks. So that's why I say we will be back in September, maybe with not as long a presentation, but with more. Hopefully definite details, uh, as to. Maybe where the buildings can go, based on results from. You saw, we've got buried things, hopefully we'll know what those things are that are buried. Hopefully we'll have the results from, from borings, uh, although maybe not. Um, but we'll have a better idea where things are going, and you know, is, is. And, and as Wayne mentioned earlier, don't look at the shapes of the buildings because, uh. There was a suggestion, maybe we should just put stars there, we don't want anybody walking away or the public. Thinking that this is, this is a plan, this is not a plan, if you, if you looked at the two layouts. They're called concepts, so, you know.
Perfect.
That's what's going on, um, I think we hit all of your questions, Dan, if there are any other questions. The three of us would be more than happy to address them.
Perfect, thank you very much.
And thank you for your time.
Yeah, I, I didn't have any, any questions, but, um. I was unfortunate enough to have some extra time with you guys, um. But I, I did wanna clarify, because we are speaking to the public and there's a lot of jargon here. And those of us that have, you know, building experience, we had a conversation the other day about how accountants. View documents very differently from builders.
Yep.
Um, and, and, you know, I know from a, a perspective of someone from the public. They may hear cold storage and think, why do we have a giant building-sized refrigerator? So that, that is not refrigeration, it's, it just means that it's not a. A normally heated and, um, environmentally secure area, it's just a giant barn. Um, but, you know, and, and some of the other things that, that we do wanna point out is. Um, Todd did an excellent, uh, you know, job of portraying that this fits our current size. Of our town fleet and our town needs, which has expanded significantly since these buildings were built many decades ago. Um, and, and I, I wanna stress to the public that. These designs are very different from what you see there, because as we move into the twenty-first century and we have. Very new environmental standards when it comes to Department of Transportation and public works buildings. Um, you'll see stuff that, that you wouldn't have seen four decades ago, like a covered area by a salt shed. Um, they have found that, that covering the loading areas. You know, increases the likelihood that that salt shed is going to stay viable for many, many decades. And it's not going to leach salt into the environment, so, um, you know, you, you, you may look at the square footage on that and be like. Why are we having three times the square footage of our old salt shed? Um, you know, part of that is, is environmental reasons. Um, and, and, you know, Dan brought up about the turning radiuses. You know, in the old days, they didn't do pass-through, uh, pass-through bays. Now they do, because they know that people die when these trucks back up. As a matter of fact, it is a state law that when you're driving a state DOT truck. You must have a passenger get out of the truck, go behind you, and be in constant visible. Flagging to make sure that you're not gonna run over anybody when you back up, they cannot back up without a ground guide. Um, and pass-through bays limits the amount of reversing that, that these trucks have to do. So, you know, um, I, I just want the public to, to remember that. Some of these considerations that are going in here have valid reasons, and we're not just. Looking to spend a ton of money, um, you know, some of them have legitimate, very important. Uh, reasons for happening.
And to add to that, uh, I've had this recommended by a couple of the committee members. And and this, we would take direction from you on, but why don't we establish an email address for the public to submit questions anywhere down the road here? This is, this is a project that we're here tonight and will continue to be here, because we want to share information, we want the public to be knowledgeable, but we also want to be able to answer questions, not that they have to hold until forever. So if you feel appropriate, I will work with 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 Dory and we can set up Public Works Project at hebronct.gov and and get that out to the public, same way we do with budget.
So. Yeah, it it definitely, I think the communications expert would say that.
Good idea. Go for it.
Yeah, I would.
We'll have it for you. Okay, for you.
And I think the only thing I'd like to add, and and Todd mentioned it, and we've talked about this before. Um, and it's going to come up as we move further down the line. But the Horton property is out there as a red siren, because people don't know what we're doing with it.
Right.
And I do think at some point, we need to start discussing what we're going to do there. Because I think the longer we put that conversation off, as we move this project forward, there's going to be people who are nervous that it's still being considered.
Sure.
There are people who would rather have it there, and if nothing's being done there, they're going to think that's still a possibility. And so I think that perception, as Todd points out, is is critical. And as we move forward, we have to come up with a plan of how to address that.
And and I think that needs to be coupled with you folks saying, Richard said the other night is, as Todd mentioned, that we're hyper laser-focused on five fifty in Colchester. But it wouldn't hurt for the Board of Selectmen to say that, say, Public Works is not going on Horton, on the Horton property. And as, I know Tiffany, you brought this up before in terms of of revising what's happening. Uh, and and in fact, your name came up, because Richard said to me, I know Tiffany brought it up, that we need a revised plan for the Horton property. He said, I'm going to give Matt a call and see where we are with that, and Matt just happened to be out of the office at that point. But, uh, yes, can't agree anymore.
And there were some concepts in the original master plan, when we think about the great lawn and some other things. Those all shouldn't be contingent on Public Works.
Public Works, yeah.
Because now Public Works is staying where it is. And so, um, I think the sooner we can get some answers on that.
And we also had, uh, Kevin and and Jean, or I shouldn't say Kevin, but Jean was under the impression, nothing's going to be done with that based on a uh, a letter to the editor from August first. Well, what what was in her letter? And, you know, in checking with Andy, nothing's been discussed, what will happen, what won't happen, that we will leave it alone, that we won't leave it alone. So, you know, if you could just go on record as saying, we're going to review, review the plan, and it, you know, as of right now, Public Works is going on five fifty.
Yep.
And that would, I think that would help quiet the chatter from the public and also dispel some of the the thoughts, as Tiffany just so rightly acknowledged out there. Uh, because I think we've all heard them all as a committee, and we just want to focus on this project and get it, get it rolling. And it's a thrill to be here with doing design after fifteen years, so thank you.
Right.
Uh, before we do wrap up, though, I do want to just bring attention back to that one slide that had the questions for the Board of Selectmen. Um, I know the makeup of the board is slightly different than what it was then. Uh, Richard did an excellent job, um, working with Andy and and the DPW Action Committee, uh, collecting information regarding what it would look like if we convert over to um pickup for the town while during the time that this is down. At the same time that that was done, Richard did an excellent job of reviewing a lot of the other questions that are on there. And so this, those have been posed to us along with supporting information and documentation for us to kind of mull over. So, um, and I know we, you know, November is is coming, you know, quicker than we think. So the board has slightly changed already. Uh, it it may change even more, um, in November. I encourage people to go back to that agenda packet that Richard put together with some of the suggestions for temporary sites and and other kind of considerations. Um, I think there are a lot of great ideas there. That doesn't mean that that's all of the ideas, you know, we're open to new ones as well. But, um, you know, definitely something to help you to mull over those questions, so that when they do come up and we need to make those decisions, um, we're not just, you know, making them in a vacuum, so.
Yeah, the costs, the costs were put, the cost to pick up trash and things, so.
Yes, I I believe, um, it was one point.
One point six, one point four, one point four, one point six.
Okay. For a year.
Yeah.
But again, the construction, the construction could go longer than a year, so it's a draft.
Okay.
Um.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Thank you for listening. Thanks for questions. Thank you guys.
We'll have to cover it in public comment at the end.
Yes.
All right, um. That brings us to personal policy review. Item eight C, uh, we are, we got the redlined uh version in the email, and then, um, please look that over, that's going to be going to the staff. It's already gone through the HR lawyer, right?
Yeah.
And, um, so just continue to to review that and send any questions you have to Andy and myself. And that'll give us a chance to do any research or or bring up anything that you may need to answer your questions. Um, eight D, any other old business? Okay, that brings us to item nine A, adopting the ordinance. Okay. Um, so earlier this evening, we had the public hearing and, um, uh, heard some public comment regarding the ordinance. So we will do a resolution at this point. Be resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen that an ordinance delegating the Board of Selectmen as the authority for fixed assessment in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes twelve dash sixty-five B and other local economic development incentive programs be adopted. And I believe the language of that ordinance is on the page below, um, which was read earlier at the uh public hearing. So any comment before we act on that motion? Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
All right, all those in favor. Okay, so Dan Larson is aye. Uh, Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean, aye.
Uh, Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And Keith Pettit is an aye that would pass. Uh, thank you very much for your consideration. All right, that brings us to item nine B, approval of the RAM SRO agreement. And Sean, you want to handle, tackle that one?
Sure. All right, the motion is that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the RAM School Resource Officer Program Memorandum of Understanding for the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-six through twenty-twenty-seven school years as presented and authorize Andrew J Tierney as town manager to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the town.
Okay. Um, I know the SRO program has has been successful, um, did you, did you have any comment, Andy, before we?
No, this is something we've been entered into for a while. They just, there was supposedly some new proposed legislation that was coming through that never, how we made it passed. So we will be having the local SRO contract coming in front of you, and it's still at the state police legal, but this one's been reviewed and brought back to us, so. This is pretty much just an updated version of what we, what we had already approved.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay. Abstentions, Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean, aye.
Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye, it passes. Thank you very much. That brings us to item nine C, um, to approve the revenue collector job description. And Tiffany, if you could. Are we there yet?
Um, well, it depends if we're amending it.
Okay.
Um, so do you want to have discussion first before I read it, or do you want me to just read it?
Go ahead and read it, and then do discussion and amendment.
All right. Uh, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the revenue collector job description as presented or amended.
Okay. Uh, discussion.
I would defer to somebody that has kind of experience in finance, it would be you. Um, it looks good to me. I see there were some changes here, and I appreciate being able to review it. So it looks good to me. Admittedly, I'm not a revenue collector or an accountant, so I'll say.
Yeah, I I didn't have any, any issues with it. I mean, and again, do not take this the wrong way, revenue collector is an important job. But, you know, it's, it's not like you're doing, you know, full audits or like very highly technical. It's, it's, you know, basic accounting and 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 finance. Um, so I had no problems with what was entered in there and the and the requirements. Um, you know, I I appreciate going back and and looking at the things and and updating it, but I did not have any adjustments at this time.
Oh, but my, my experience with labor law is hiring a lawyer to negotiate for me.
I'm in a U D. I mean, I, okay. All right, so, um, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or abstentions. Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean, aye.
Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to the draft agenda for September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. Um, any adjustments at this point? If not, uh, please send an email with any updates you have, so that we can get that modified well in advance. Any other new business? Okay. And that brings us to item ten, consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in the section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion or a separate vote as necessary. Does anyone wish to call a separate vote? Okay. Um, any adjustments to the minutes? All right. With that in mind, um, I will take a motion, I get, is it my, it's my turn, isn't it?
I think it's your turn.
It is. Uh, move the Board of Selectmen to approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein, as if individually adopted, the approval of minutes for the August seventh, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting, and the list of attached tax refunds. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or abstentions. Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teal?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
And Keith Pettit, aye, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to liaison reports. Tiffany?
Um, nothing from A H M, and the Board of Ed is meeting tonight.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Dan Larson, anything for Board of Finance?
I have nothing from the Board of Finance, but I would like to make a comment. Uh, I went to the Peters House, uh, meeting, uh, or not the Peters House meeting, but, uh, Commission, um, Historic Properties Commission, and at the Peters House. So I just wanted to say that the, uh, work that was done on the front porch, the, uh, the side, you know, facing the the road as you drive in, uh, is looking incredible. Uh, they are talking about looking for large, flat stepping stones. Those would be stones roughly seven and a half to a maximum of eight inch in rise, uh, because of the long-range plan is to have, uh, steps coming up from the uh, parking area by the soccer field to go up to the, uh, entrance uh, of the Peters House. So just putting that out, that if anybody has any large rocks they want to get rid of, um, that could be used for that purpose would be fantastic.
Excellent. Uh, land acquisition has, uh, not met since our last meeting, and, um, Claudia is not here for RAM BOE, and I'm not aware of any updates on that. Uh, that brings us to item eleven, public comment. Please.
Hi, uh, Kevin Tulamary, one-ten Kenny Road. And I'd just like to clarify, uh, the comment that was made earlier about the misunderstanding of the Horton property. Um, my wife, no, I, you may or may not know, a regular, uh, letter to the editor writers at the River East. It was a previous letter writer, not one of us, that stated that the land, the Horton property is already preserved. So why continue, uh, fighting for its preservation? Just to be on the record, to be clear, as I'm sure you all know, the land on the north side of Kenny Road, seventeen Kenny Road, the Horton property is not preserved. It's currently, uh, active as a mixed-use area under the Village Green District, Village Square District. It changed the name a couple of times. Um, so I just thought that would be important to kind of clarify that as that, that's coming around again. Um, I do agree that it is important, as now in the Action Committee pointed out, that this Horton property continues to be a distraction with the Public Works conversation and either a concern or a hope that it's involved with the Public Works. Uh, I would certainly encourage, um, the Board of Selectmen and anyone interested to visit Save Hebron Center on Facebook. There's a lot of historical, environmental, and, uh, economic issues at stake there that support the preservation of this property as a outdoor environmental classroom or a living, living history museum. So I think that's something that, uh, I would, that you may know, I promote, and it found a lot of support in the community. So as going forward, as we continue the discussion of what to do with the Horton property, I think making clarifications of the focus for the public work is Old Colchester Road. We have the design team that's in place that says this is possible to do it there. And I think that's a really important stand for the Board of Selectmen to convey to the public. And then we can move forward with both the Public Works, uh, discussion and passing that, that referendum, and also the, uh, Horton property and what the future of that land is. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Or any public comment from all the line? Okay. Seeing none. That brings us to.
Uh, move to adjourn the Hebron Board of Selectmen's meeting at eight oh eight.
Excellent. Thank you all, and have a good evening.